The time and the presence of a quorum, I'll call this meeting to order. Calling it to order, okay. First item, are there any citizens concerned? So these are any, anything you want to speak about that is not otherwise on the agenda. Chairman's update. So I hope everybody got to enjoy the super moon eclipse last night. It was a pretty cool experience. And this was the first one in my lifetime, actually, so, just to date myself. Some upcoming events in town on Wednesday night. The Water Resources Advisory Committee is having an info session on their proposed stormwater bylaw at 7:00 in this room. That's an issue we'll either be voting on at the, if we call a fall town meeting, or at the annual town meeting. So I encourage everybody to come to that and learn more about the proposed bylaw. You'll notice that Steve Ledoux is not here tonight. He's at the ICMA conference in Seattle. So our assistant town manager, Mark, is filling in nicely for us. And at that conference there, he and Doug, along with their colleagues from our neighboring communities, are accepting award for our crosstown connect project, which is a pretty big achievement. So that's, that's really great. Some upcoming meetings, we'll be talking about the, on October 5th, we'll have a presentation, update from the Acton Nursing Services Task Force. And we will also have an update from the superintendent of Minuteman Tech, sort of about what's going on there, and particularly about their proposed building project. So I encourage people to attend that meeting. And again, it's next Monday, October 5th, not the normal two weeks from now. And then finally, we received a note from the superintendent of Acton-Boxborough Regional School District noting that he's going to be proposing at the school committee's meeting on Thursday night to recommend a committee to focus on their capital and space planning needs. And he will be asking for one representative each from Acton and Boxborough. So Steve just wanted to bring that to the, to the board's attention. Okay, Mark, do you have any update?
I do not.
Okay, wonderful. All right, we have a few minutes before our first hearing, so why don't we do the consent agenda? So I'll read through these, and if you have any you want to hold, please say hold. Okay, number five, the traffic control agreement. Number six, approved meeting minutes, August 20th, 2015. Number seven, one day alcoholic beverage license for Linda Minkoff, Congregation Beth Elohim, November 7th, 2015. Number eight, one day alcoholic beverage license, Julia Filipova, Nagog Clubhouse, October 3rd, 2015. Number nine, request for prorated refund, Slajja Sedi, all alcoholic beverage pouring license, Mayuri Indian Cuisine. Actually, gonna hold that. Number 10, change of business address, ABC Taxi, 10 Central Street to 25A Spruce Street.
I'll ask that to you, please.
Hold, okay. Number 11, committee appointments, Paula Goodwin and James Salem Land Stewardship Committee. Number 10, or number 12, excuse me, committee appointment, William Aylesbury Site Plan Special Permit Study Committee. Number 13, accept gift Recreation Department from Stop &amp; Shop totaling $200 to be used to purchase food for supplies for upcoming Recreation Department community events. Number 14, accept gift Recreation Department from anonymous donor, $500 to cover a classical concert on June 18th, 2015. And number 15, request to dispose of obsolete items at the Memorial Library. Okay, so I held number, you had a question? Okay, I held number nine, the request to prorate, to have a prorated refund for the alcoholic beverage license. Typically, in the past, we've prorated the, these types of things if there was, you know, a project didn't go through, or something of that nature. But this is just, there was a delay in opening their restaurant. But the money for the license covers the cost of processing that license, which we already did, and they will still need. So I'm just not sure why we would prorate that. So I'm not in favor of this, but I didn't know how other people felt.
It goes for a year, right? Would be, they'd have to pay it again next year, right?
Oh, that's true, yeah. They, in, in one month, they have to pay it again?
Oh.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay, no, then I change, yeah, then that's fine, okay. I was thinking-
I think it's also $5,000, which I think is probably exceeds even the straight across.
Yeah, which is interesting, yeah. Okay, all right, then I withdraw my hold. All right. Peter, you held number 10?
Yeah, there's nothing in the packet here, but this is a request for a change of business address. I saw some discussions from the condominium owners on Central 20, 25A Spruce Street about the business moving there and back and forth between them and the planning department, but I didn't see an actual application to change the business address. I mean, there must be a form, I'm assuming. Oh, okay, so you just, you have that, you just didn't include it in the package? You don't? Okay. I think if that's what's required, I think it's probably appropriate to do that, yeah.
To wait, okay. So let's pull that one. Okay. And can I have a motion to approve all of the consent agenda, accepting number 10?
So move.
Second.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Okay, excellent. All right, 7:10. Okay, this is the alleged over-service hearing for the local table. So the active Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 28th, 2015, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 in Town Hall, for an order to show cause for an alleged over-service incident at the local table, 251 Arlington Street, Acton, Mass. on April 2nd, 2015. So as you saw in the packet, there was an incident, but the local table is now closing, has closed down. They were initially going to open for private events and still use a liquor license, which is why this was on the hearing, but they've decided not to do that. So we felt that there wasn't a need to hold the over-service hearing. So unless there are any objections, I will close the hearing. We will move on. Okay, excellent. All right, so next, we're going to do, our next hearing's not till 8:00 PM, so we are going to move on to Selectmen's business, which is the Senior Center Study Committee update. And just to let everybody know, you know, we will have to stop at 8:00 for another hearing, so we're gonna have the update from the committee, and then do questions and start public comment, but we will have to pause and come back to the issue after our other hearings. So I apologize for the awkward timing of this.
Something's warming up, I guess.
In the meantime, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'm Peter Ashton. With me is Sharon Mercurios, the head of COA. I am the, actually, the vice chair of the Senior Center Study Committee. Chris Hamilton, who is the chair, called me about an hour and a half ago, said he was stuck in Boston, and this was now going to be my job, so. I will be sort of winging this, but anyway, it's, it's our pleasure to be here to give you an update, if the technology works. We can all see the update. Sure, oh, there we go. Okay. So basically, we're here to give an update of the work of the committee. The committee started meeting back in March, and we are also here, we wrote you a letter back on September 11th regarding the charge to our committee, and we're seeking support and clarification regarding that charge. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. There we go. Just to refresh everybody's recollection about what the charge of the Senior Center Study Committee is, it's up there on the chart. The Board of Selectmen does hereby establish a Senior Center Study Committee to evaluate options for the relocation or renovation of the senior center. The committee shall determine future programmatic needs of the senior center and the corresponding space needs, and evaluate the feasibility of renovating the current center, leasing a facility, or building a new building on town or privately owned land. And that was the charge, as was provided to us, and I believe voted on by the Board of Selectmen last October, or thereabouts, I believe. And I would note that there had been a prior charge about a year, a year before that, which had some reference to the community center option, and that was removed from this charge, and that's been part of the discussion. Before I go any further, I think most of the members, except for Chris of the committee, are in attendance tonight, I see most of them. But we have a member of the Board of Selectmen, Franny Osman, two members of the Council on Aging, Barbara Wilson and Marion Maxwell, who I know are here, Sharon Mercurio, the Council on Aging Director, the Municipal Properties Director, no longer interim, I should add, Andrea Ristine, I don't know whether Andrea's here or not, five at-large members, including myself, Dean Charter, Mimi Flannery, Chris Hamilton, and Bob Skillin, who is also here. And as part of the charge, in the very fine print, which if only lawyers like Peter can read, it says that we're supposed to give periodic updates to the Board of Selectmen. So that's part of why we're here tonight. As I said, we've made a number of, we've made a fair amount of progress since last March, when we started meeting. And we have taken a number of votes over that period of time, within the context of our charge of evaluating, for example, options for relocation or renovation. We very early on determined that renovating the current senior center was not feasible and would not accomplish the goals and the demands for a new senior center. We also have voted based largely on the recommendation of the town manager to pursue a new building that would include not only a senior center, but also several of the other human services departments, including the nursing department, the veteran service officer, and the community resource coordinator. In addition, in August, August 13th, I believe, to be precise, we voted to go forward in terms of a specific space, which is town-owned property on Arlington Street. There's approximately five acres of buildable space on that area. For those of you familiar with it, that was a, a specific lot that had actually been held or controlled by the schools for a number of years, and as part of the whole regionalization process, it was negotiated that that would go back to the town, so the town now has control of that site. And at that same meeting, the study committee also voted to, to basically name the senior center, not a senior center, but an adult community center, whatever that really meant, but it basically envisioned dedicating programming to, to the senior center from approximately 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the evening, and then possibly allowing broader community use or other recreational uses after that point in time, 5:00. After that meeting in August, we had some more discussion, and we were basically prepared to reach out to our architect and start providing some information to him so that he could start formulating some preliminary plans, some of which we actually hoped to be able to present to you all tonight. However, at the next couple of meetings, I think the committee sort of bogged down in discussions that brought us back to the whole issue of community center. And we took a vote that we would not continue to do any work until we sought and received clarification from the Board of Selectmen. And that was the genesis for the letter that you all received that was dated September 11th, where we're really seeking support and clarification regarding our charge, and specifically whether we should be focused just on a senior center approach, or whether the approach should entail aspects of a broader community center as well. Maybe a little history is perhaps in order at this point. Some of us, yours truly included, have been working on this issue since 2007. The Board of Selectmen, I had just left the Board of Selectmen at that point in time, and they formed a Senior Center Expansion Committee to study needs and to evaluate whether the Audubon Hill site could serve those needs. We studied this issue for a couple of years, we actually issued a pretty detailed report. The conclusion was that renovation was not feasible, and we concluded that building a new center up in North Acton adjacent to NARA was the most feasible option. That was, I should add, after looking at over 60 different sites in town, and we had also considered leasing as an option, and also talked with some other towns about whether there was interest in doing some type of joint senior center, but no interest was expressed. Unfortunately, the report was issued in January of 2009, for those of you who remember what the economy was like then. It was very rapidly determined by the Selectmen, as well as the Expansion Committee, that no further work should be done until the economy improved, and so the committee essentially disbanded. In 2011, the committee was formed again, to form the Senior Center Building Committee, and the charge there from the Selectmen was essentially to pursue the recommendations of the prior report. We did work for about a year, we recommended moving forward with a senior center in North Acton with off-hours community use. This went to the town meeting in April of 2012, where we were requesting, or really the Selectmen were requesting $140,000 in design money, but that motion did not pass. Some said it was the location, some said there were questions about the community center component, and others did not believe that the need for a new senior center was clearly expressed. Picture tells a thousand words. I don't know how many of you visit the senior center regularly, but you should. It is a vibrant center of activity, as these pictures indicate. It's also a very crowded center of activity, as these pictures indicate. So, to try and be brief, why are we here today? The need is definitely there for a new senior center, I think we all see that. There are severe constraints in terms of size. The existing facility was not actually built to be a senior center in the first place. It's only about 5,000 square feet. It has very limited parking, particularly in the mornings. The space is extremely limited for exercise classes and other programs, which are currently oversubscribed, and the demand continues to increase. There's limited meeting space, there's need for shelter and emergency use. We need a new center. And if that's not enough, we have updated our demographic projections, or actually others have updated them for us. Today, we approximately have slightly less than 4,000 seniors defined as over age 60, that's the way the census cuts it off, represents about 17% of our population. By 2025, the projections of both MAPC and the Donahue Institute at UMass project that we will have over 6,000 seniors, representing about 25% of the total population here in Acton. So seniors are here, and they're gonna stay here, and they're gonna grow much more rapidly than any other element of our population. So, back to the letter that we provided to you back in early September. We tried to summarize the progress, much as this presentation has, and also to summarize some of the frustrations that some of the committee members felt, that there was support, not only among some members in the community, but also certain members of the Board of Selectmen, that were in favor of a broader community center approach. This is an issue that keeps coming up, meeting after meeting, and I think certain members of the committee became very frustrated that we couldn't seem to move beyond this particular issue. And so the committee voted to send this letter to the Selectmen, and furthermore voted, as I indicated before, to stop any further work, particularly because we were at the point where we were about to get the architect involved. It didn't seem to make sense to us, if we were sort of weighing two different potential options, to send the architect down one road, come back here a month later, and then be told, well, that's not the road we want to go, and so we would have wasted money on the architect, potentially, had we done so. So we've waited until this evening to come before you, indicate to you sort of our conundrum, if you will, and hope that you will give us direction as to moving forward. We certainly hope to move forward with the senior center only approach, but at least give us some support and clarification about what you want us to do. Thank you. Sharon, I don't know whether you have anything to add. I'm sorry, I shouldn't cut you off so quickly.
As a senior center director, I reach out to other Council on Aging directors, I've spoken with elder affairs. Bottom line is, what I'm hearing from people that have tried this, because Acton's not unique, a lot of communities, when building a senior center, run into the same problem, I see it, that, that they should include a community center. And bottom line, what I'm hearing from these folks that are experts in this field is, it just doesn't work. The needs may seem very similar to people that, that don't know what goes on at a senior center, but that they're very, very different. A senior center is more of a passive recreation. Seniors have hearing issues, they have mobility issues. They need a place where they can be with their peers. And I think it sounds great, it sounds wonderful to have a building for everyone, but I just don't feel that's fair. I feel the seniors need a place that they can call their own, where they feel they can be with their peers, they don't need to be feeling self-conscious if they need to ask somebody to speak up in a lecture. They would. If there's a group of 40-year-olds, a senior's not going to advocate for themselves. And exercise, I think our classes are so popular because people are comfortable there. It's, it's an exercise class suited for seniors with an instructor who knows seniors. Start mixing that up and bringing 40 and 50-year-olds in, I would see our, our attendance go straight down. People are comfortable being with their peers. We're serving 60 to 104-year-olds is, is the oldest that we have coming to the senior center. That's a huge demographic. And to try to expand our services to include everyone, I just don't feel as fair. I feel Acton is a really rich community. I'm amazed at what community ed has to offer, what recreation has to offer. I was at a meeting at a church recently and, and saw even what the church had to offer. There were choir groups and yoga and all these other programs for everybody in the community. This is our one chance to get our one space for the seniors, and I hope you support that.
Okay, thank you, Peter and Sharon. Why don't I start if there are any questions from the board, and then we can go to audience. Peter?
I just have a quick question. You've got 5,000 square feet now, what, have you got far enough to figure out how big a building you need, if there are 6,000 seniors who need to use these services?
That, that's what we were actively working on, and again, then, when we- That's what we were actively working on, and again, then when we voted to also include human services, Heather and Dean Chotter and I were sitting down with the architect. We actually had two meetings with him, and we're still trying to sift that all out. We're thinking maybe about 20,000 square feet.
What we had looked at before was around 17,000 square feet. So, if we're adding those additional offices, it's going to have to be a little bit north of that. So, 20,000 sounds like a reasonable figure.
Janet?
First, I'll acknowledge that I am the rabble-rouser on the Board of Selectmen, and I have to, I do know that there's some people in the audience who have more to say when it comes time for audience participation, but I have to tell you that I was not intending to undermine the efforts of the Senior Center Study Committee, and I was just kind of casually talking with people about options. And it just started very casually this summer, and I'm inquisitive. I like to learn, improve my understanding of things, so that's how it turned into discussions. And we actually visited some senior centers, including the very new one in Lexington, I mean, Community Center, the new one in Lexington, which actually incorporates the former senior center services. What they said about that place is that there are people showing up for the senior center services whom they never saw at the old senior center because they're on the younger side. And people in their 60s like me are in complete denial of the fact that we're aging and we're no longer cool and young. And so, we like to buy, we like to buy as much time as we have. But the point that I had, and some people who will speak up later have, is that if you're going to be exploring a potential new capital expenditure bonding, long-term obligation for the people in the town, it would be good to make sure that you've exhausted all of the options. And one of the options that's pretty obvious includes counting for some community services that are not limited to people who are age 60 or over. Now, I know that there was a lot of discussion on the committee about naming the committee and maybe allowing adults to participate, and I think that that's a step in the right direction, but I also gather that the space during the day would be exclusively for seniors, which is not the flexibility that somebody like me would like. But in any event, I had a question. I have been looking, I looked at that excellent 2009 report, and it is unfortunate for a lot of people probably, that the times being what they were, that that proposal wasn't able to move forward because you had a committee of 22 people, you subdivided, everybody had a responsibility. I mean, it was, I don't know if you put it together, Peter, or somebody, all of you professional consultant types collaborated, but it was very polished, complete with diagrams of proposed layouts and things like that. One of the questions that I had was, what proportion of the senior population in town actually goes to the senior center on a regular basis? Because I understand that the numbers of seniors will grow as a proportion of the population, but I'm just wondering if, how many, what proportion actually uses it? Because that's sort of been fuzzy to me, and I'm just wondering if you've actually done the calculations.
So, last year, in a report, there were 4,489 seniors, and we serviced 1,191. So, we're servicing about a quarter of the senior population.
Okay, other questions? Jameson?
I don't have questions. I'm looking forward to hearing everybody's, and I didn't think it was the time to...
Yeah, I think we're hoping to do questions now.
Just questions. Yeah, I don't have any questions for you.
I do have one.
Sure.
All right. So, the only question I have for you is, assuming you were to go back and evaluate the option of running this as either a community center plus senior center, or a senior center with, you know, some small number of additional community services, what would you expect that evaluation time period to be and sort of, and sort of how much longer would you expect that to take, you guys?
Go ahead. You've been here from the beginning, so...
Well, I hope it won't take another eight years, but, you know, it's hard to answer that question because I think it really needs to be defined in terms of what you want us to look at if it's not just a senior center. I mean, if it is a full-blown community center, I know from what I have heard in our meetings, I think you're going to have to reconstitute the committee, so that's going to take some time. And probably do the whole process similar to what Janet was just talking about of going and visiting community centers and things like that. There's no question in my mind, even if you were to sort of go a smaller step, but still reconstitute the committee, you're probably going to lose at least a year. I mean, the whole idea of what we've been planning on, and I should have said this in my presentation, is we've been hoping that we would be ready so that you all would be able to present to town meeting in April, request for design money similar to what we had done, whatever it would have been, four years ago. That clearly would not happen. So, you'd be pushed back, in my mind, at least a year.
And, not being a pessimist, but I even see it being a little bit longer. The Council on Aging's been in existence since the 70s. We have a mission statement. We have years of statistics and data. Community center morphs each time this comes up. Last time, there was a subcommittee that worked on it, and there was talk of swimming pools and indoor tracks and basketball courts. This group is seeing something a little different. What is a community center? Who is it serving? Who's going to run it? Because recreation isn't here saying that this is what they want. So, we're talking about a whole new department, I believe. What's their mission? What are their statistics? So, I feel we've done so much work that we're ready to run. We were ready to have this for town meeting, and I think we still, if we have your support, can go on the fast track and have that ready for you. I think, should we incorporate this other component, we are talking about a significant setback.
My only question is just about, I think, I can't remember if it was in the letter and some emails we've received about kind of what you mentioned, Sharon, both the funding streams, the current funding stream for how the senior center is run, and then any potential funding streams you've thought about for building the senior center and what restrictions there might be on that. So, if you expanded this, would you still be eligible for similar kinds of funding?
There's a bill in the Senate, or that's going to the Senate, that is prepared, funding for senior centers only. So, no, if we incorporate the community-centered component, we would not be eligible for that funding. Also, the majority of our programs are funded, one from a state grant, a formula grant, that services 60 and older, so that would not be able to be used for people under 60. And then we have an amazing Friends of the Acton Seniors Group that does fundraising and also pays for a large portion of the programs. Their mission is to support seniors in town. So, again, where is the money coming from? Where's the budget coming from? Should we incorporate this other group? And if there are building funds available in a couple of years, that would be great, but we wouldn't be eligible.
Janet?
A couple of points of clarification. First of all, the Lexington Community Center does, as I say, incorporate a senior center service component in it, and they made clear that they continue to receive state funding for those services, but you have to provide services that are dedicated to seniors. You don't have to have a separate building, but you do have to have services dedicated to seniors. And the bill, of which Jamie Eldridge is one of the sponsors, is probably going to take several years to get anywhere, which you probably would know better than the rest of us.
Okay, so that looks like questions from the board. I'll open up to public comment. I think there's a lot of people here tonight, obviously, so I just ask if you could keep your comments to around two minutes, and if you, when you come up to the microphone, just state your name and address, please, and just hit the little face to turn it on.
Good evening. I'm Lena Osborne. I've been an Acton resident for 46 years. I have been on the Friends of the Acton Council on Aging since 1981. I have been treasurer since 1990. As I sit here, I'm reminded of Yogi Berra, late and lamented. I'm seeing déjà vu all over again. So, I would like to speak very strongly that the study committee is kept to its original charge, that for many, many reasons that you will hear, it is the best option. It is what seniors want. This is a very active group. It is a group that has given a great deal to this community, and we are long overdue, I think, in returning what is needed for them, which is a dedicated senior center. With the service offices, I think that is a marvelous combination. I'm very excited about that, but not with having a larger community center that would be used during the day. In a very short period of time, the COA members collected over 200 signatures, not only from seniors, but from non-seniors who see themselves using the center in the future, and I would like to present it to Chairperson Green. Thank you.
I stood before you a few years back expressing our desire for a new senior center. Well, here I am back pleading the same desire. I would get on my knees, but I'd never get back up, so... We seniors are living longer, and we need more space to accommodate our needs. I will be long gone by the time a new senior center is built, but just think, some of you and our future seniors will benefit greatly. Please give this serious consideration. Thank you.
Lena, can you just hit the button?
Mary Louie Pucci. I'm 61 years old. I'm a newly-minted senior. Most people don't perceive me as a senior. I dye my hair. I think it's really important for the Selectmen and the community at large to hear from the younger seniors, the rumor generation. And I've written to the Selectmen at length with my feelings about the center. I support the senior center only, not a community center. There's just a couple of points that I haven't heard come up in the larger conversations that I just want to point out. For those who support a community center, you labor under a major misapprehension. You think that your use of that center will be free. It won't. It'll be treated as any other municipal property owned by the town of Acton. For you to use that community center, you will not only pay for it with your taxes, you will have to rent that space every single time you use it. This isn't going to be a free-for-all. So, you've got to consider that, whether it's more economical to rent that space or to rent space in a local church or in the schools. I feel that Acton already has more than adequate facilities available for rent for the types of activities that the community center is looking for. Furthermore, a big part of the reason why the current senior center is only serving about a quarter of the population is because you can't fit any more people up there. More people would like to come up, but there's nowhere to park. So, that becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And also, as a baby boomer, my generation continues to work, and we want a center that we can use in the evening after we work. And so, that puts us in conflict with families who want to use it for non-senior purposes. And thank you very much.
I'm Lisa Franklin of Windsor Avenue, and I don't have an opinion, but I do want some clarification. I must be misunderstanding some part of this. If the senior center is only for seniors, how can we have government departments in it and not allow the rest of the public to come in and use those departments? I'm finding, to me, it sounds like there's a clash there, so I would like somebody just to explain what you really mean by that.
Sure. We've been working with the architect, so there will be a senior center, and we're even hoping to have a separate entrance. So, it will be open for the general public, the other human service offices, just not the senior center. So, anybody can go see nursing, the veteran service officer, or the community resource coordinator.
First of all, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Angela DeAndrea. I live at 5 Robbins Street. My family has been in Acton for 51 years, myself for 35. I am a former teacher at the Elm Street School, when it was called the Elm Street School. That's how long ago. I want to say I love children. I taught as an educator for over 30-plus years, but there's a time I need to be away from them, and I think that's important. To answer Ms. Sedachi's question, you asked how often the senior center, our senior center is used? It is used daily. There are people there every single day, Monday through Friday, and come back several times for the several sessions or activities that are going on. It's not a one-shot deal. Important thing I want to stress, children, we do a lot for them, and I'm glad our town does, but they have a lot of things. This is our only thing, our senior center, and it should remain that way. Thank you very much.
Jason Cole from Neshova Road. One question. Does the change to adding the extra services also delay being ready for April, or does, or only changing it to a full-blown community center, change it to not being ready for the April town meeting?
I think I can answer that. If by, you mean changing to having the other human service departments, no, that's been part of the planning process basically all along, and so that would not cause a delay. But moving to a broader community center concept would, certainly in my view, cause considerable delay.
So, the only major change, adding the human services components, is taking a building from 17, approximately 17,000 to 20,000 square feet?
Correct.
Still on target for April end, has already been discussed with the architect?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Marge Kennedy from Church Street, and I'm here to share some thoughts, both as a senior and as a member of one of those advocating for a community center in Acton. We had already respectively requested that the Board of Selectmen modify the charge, membership, and name of the Senior Center Study Committee to allow for the study of options for a community center in addition to options for the new community center. When we attended meetings of the Senior Center Study Committee, our intention was not to derail or undermine the deliberations. Instead, we hoped to open up a conversation together. We wanted to explore the possibilities for creating a center to serve both seniors and different age groups, a facility that could offer programs and activities for all to enjoy, either separately or together. We were given time to speak at these Senior Center Study Committee meetings, which we appreciated, but we are dismayed by the misunderstandings that have ensued. We who envision a community center have no completed plan, no final conclusions, nor specific design to propose, but rather, a number of possibilities to consider. Those possibilities involve many questions, questions that will take time, research, and commitment to resolve. Here are some questions that I think need answers, and those answers will be the foundation for deciding what an Acton community center can be. What advice is available from other towns that have created community centers? What programs and activities are already provided in Acton for different age groups? Who offers these programs and activities? Town departments, community organizations, schools, local businesses, anything else? What ones have waiting lists? What ones lack full enrollment? What requests are not met? Who is participating in provided programs and activities? Are there opportunities? Are there opportunities for residents of diverse ages and backgrounds to participate together? Who might be served or interested in participating in shared opportunities yet to be offered? Who will determine the type and extent of such opportunities? Where might they take place? What safety measures are essential to protect participants of different ages? Who will administer a shared facility? And where will the funding come from? This is a long and daunting list, and I'm sure more could be added. If the Senior Center Study Committee is not modified, excuse me, not modified as requested, then I suspect the possibilities for a community center will remain possibilities only. If the Board of Selectmen does approve our request, we believe that the newly formed committee will require the efforts of many, many willing volunteers, including both seniors and non-seniors. My main question is, could not the many tasks carried out together give us the chance to come to a better understanding, appreciation of, and respect for one another, whatever the ultimate decision turns out to be? Those are my thoughts and hopes. Thank you for listening.
Pat Chappert. I've been an Acton resident for over 40 years. We feel fortunate in being a town that's as rich in resources and as responsive to needs as we have experienced here. But the last speaker made a good point. We respond to needs. And she has very nicely outlined that those needs, in view of the community center idea, have not been defined. We have a need for a senior center. They are defined. They're specific. They're real. And they're being dealt with on a daily basis in a very definite way. You're asking us to set aside this real need with great definition for another idea that has not been defined. We enlarged the school when you saw the need for it. You bought playing fields when you saw the need for it. You established Danny's Place when you saw the need for it. You expanded the library when it was defined as a need. The senior center clearly has a need. The community center is an ill-defined concept that would take a great deal of time and effort to bring to this group in any kind of form that could be voted upon. I would hope that you would stick to what we see as clearly defined needs and not mix it up with a concept that has yet to be defined. And I'll just give you an idea of what the richness is within our community. I went into the phone book. We have 10 childcare centers listed, eight health clubs, 17 churches. We have the women's club, the garden club. We have the fraternal organizations, Elks, Lions, Rotary. We are a rich community. Don't put the brakes on a needed senior center for a poorly defined idea of a community center, which our last speaker very nicely showed, has to have a great deal more research before you can even call it a need. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alma Sanman. We've lived here for 36 years in Acton. I think real numbers can describe needs. And I always advocate for the exercise classes. We have classes of 25 each. We've been limited to only being allowed to take three classes. There are many seniors who wanted to take exercise classes this season. They didn't, maybe they got into one class. We have waiting lists on Tuesdays or Thursdays of 15 people. And you already have 25 people in a given exercise class. This speaks to the need that the speaker before me was addressing. I'm a member of the Medical Reserve Corps. We had to go through the process of looking at the senior center as a place for an emergency situation. Yes, we have a toilet there. Yes, we have air conditioning. But if we had a situation where we had to put in showers, the septic system won't facilitate that. We can't do any kind of serious cooking there because you don't have a septic system. Now, the high school is a nice facility. But if we had a really pandemic situation occur, that senior center just isn't going to make it. So I really think that it's time to stop dividing and conquering and get on with, let's do something for the seniors. What I find extremely interesting is, before we started this discussion, the selectmen were put on alert that the superintendent of schools was going to request more money for more facilities or more. I really wasn't paying that close attention. But it's like, now the school's going to get more money. You want a reaction in this town? Just get the seniors angry. And even though it might hurt our real estate taxes a bit, we don't have to vote for the school budget if we don't have a place to go and do exercise and play chess or do any number of other things, just being with our peers. And look at the number. 2,000 more people projected to be in town who are over the age of 65. You can't just keep dividing and conquering. It just does not make sense. And the number of years that most of us are sitting here that have lived in town, we've supported the schools. Our kids have gotten good educations. And they've gone on to give us grandchildren who are also being very successful. It's time. It's time to take care of us. Thank you.
Any further comments? Marge, go ahead.
Marge, again. I think some of the divisions that are now reported to happen in Acton can't necessarily be defined by having a center for some and many activities for others. My vision of a community center is a place where we can come together. And some of those divisions can be dissolved. And we can learn to, as I said earlier, appreciate and respect one another and learn from each other by not being in a divided situation. Thank you.
In conclusion, I would like--
Can you just say your name?
Oh, Ann Cochran, a 48-year resident of the town. I've sent you, select people, many letters over the course of the last two weeks. The last, about a week, 10 days, we collected some signatures. I want you to know that I chose not to go to the senior center. I chose to walk in West Acton. I chose to contact doctors. And if you look through those signatures, you'll be amazed that a good half of that 200 are quite, not yet, seniors. Forty, 35, parents of young kids. So I think that as we're looking at this situation tonight, we're thinking that perhaps there is a need. I think it has been articulated very well. There is definitely a need for a senior center. And I strongly believe that there are many young people in town who recognize and want to provide that. It has been since 2007. I have with me tonight the chairman of the COA Board, who went through that whole process. And she said to me as we were coming here tonight, it's about time. And I think that's the issue. It's about time because it's going to take time to get an architect, to hire a construction team, and it's going to be quite a few years. So even if we went through the process of surveying and finding out many of the valid issues that Marge had raised, that adds years, years, to the fruition of any center. But at the current rate, we could have a senior center in maybe five years. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comments. All right, we'll talk briefly as a board. And then I think since we're at the point, you know, timing's a little bit different. I'll call the hearing at 8:00 and we'll probably put a pause on that and finish our discussion here so everybody can go home. And then we'll come back to the over-service. So thoughts from board members? Who wants to start? Usually I don't, so. Janet, no?
Well, there's, you know, I've made no secret about the fact that I was trying, I had started talking with people about community center options. And I still think that, you know, I understand the concern about its taking time and setting back the project. I mean, I do have some concerns about borrowing rates because there's some possibility that interest rates are going to go up. And so this is the time, if you're going to borrow money, to do it. And I'm enough of a pragmatist to realize that that stuff matters in the public sector. But at the same time, I am concerned about this being a project that is going to be around for the long term. And it is going to be serving not only people in the room today, but people who are future seniors. And it's really, it's really not-- petitions are a useful measure of interest. But, you know, obviously, if we wanted to get a real good sense of what people in this town think about the whole issue, we would have to do surveys, and it would take time. But my feeling is that there really has, aside from the subcommittee and the last building committee, the senior center building committee, I don't know how much attention has been put into evaluating community center options. I think that frankly, some of the comments that I've seen coming into the board objecting pretty strenuously to community centers are, have in mind, the country club community center with, you know, the swimming pool and the childcare center and the teen center and, you know, full court, basketball court, and all the rest of it, all the bells and whistles. And that is certainly not anything that the people I've been talking to are thinking about. We're really looking for a place where non-senior adults would be able to be a part of the activity. And that means just another option to go for programs, for lectures, meeting, space during the day and not just at night. Because there are people who are not seniors who are around town during the day who might find it useful for a number of reasons to be able to use a center that wasn't limited to seniors. So, but all of this is going to take time, including, even if we were to move forward with this project, the construction, the design and construction of it, it's going to be several years running. But I still, you know, I was disappointed, I think, when we voted, I guess it was last year. I went, I voted with the committee, but I had reservations. And I really thought that, given the fact that the community center option had been part of the charge originally or earlier, that we still needed to finish exploring that and build on the knowledge that previous committees had created. And that didn't happen. And so ultimately, what happened is that there was this little behind-the-scenes conversation to try to address some of those issues for my own satisfaction. So I just, I just feel as if there is an opportunity that is not being explored that we ought to. And we're supposed to be looking out for the interests of the town as a whole. And I know that seniors in this room certainly have a strong interest in proceeding with what they know. There's more certainty because we've had a senior center. So you get a certain amount of wisdom from having experience with a senior center. We haven't had a community center. So it's a new thing. It will require a little more work. But I still, I do take seriously the responsibility for looking out for the interests of the entire town. And I think that there's, I still think there's, maybe it's idealistic. There's a way to serve more than just seniors and sort of the social services part of the town services. But anyhow, I'll wait, I want to hear what everybody else--
If I could just come to that, please.
Hold on. Actually, we, I appreciate that, but I think we are closing it for public comment right now. You know, I think we did hear from everybody and appreciate everybody's comments. But yeah, thank you. I just don't want to get in a back and forth. And I'm hoping we can have this conversation and get you guys a vote and move forward as opposed to dragging this on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but thank you. So I am going to read the legal notice for our 8 o'clock hearing, and then we'll come back to this conversation. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 28, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall for an order to show cause for an alleged over-service incident at Ixtapa Mexican Grill in Cantina, 103 Nagog Park, Acton. The documentation can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Okay, so we'll pause that and come back to it. Thoughts? Anybody want to go next?
I would like to, I guess, in light of the discussion that has happened, ask you guys one more question. The size of the facility, you guys have determined at 20,000 square feet. Sort of, I guess, what I would like to know is, how is that, is that projected to meet sort of 2025 demands? Or do you expect that facility to become too small, you know, around that time or maybe a few years after that? Sort of the longevity of the facility based on its size?
The way we, the way we always approach projects like this, public safety facility, library, et cetera, is to build with an assumed life of at least 25 years. So the idea would be to try to build a facility to meet what we expect and perceive the demand to be for the next 25 years. Now, we've heard a lot of discussion that, you know, only a quarter of the seniors right now use the current senior center, but there's a lot of pent-up demand. So it's a little difficult to precisely define exactly what the demand might be in 15 or 25 years. But that's in part the job of the architect to really hone that in.
Have you erred in sort of projecting that demand? Have you erred on the side of extra demand or on the side of sort of projecting what, projecting based on current demand?
I'm not sure our projections are that finely tuned at this point. That's in fact the reason we want to bring in an architect because they have the expertise far beyond us to be able to figure that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, I want to, I feel very strongly that we need a senior center. We need a senior center primarily for seniors. And I've felt that way all along. And some of the things that were hard over the last few months is that there have been misunderstandings that I've heard. And it was frustrating where I felt it was important to listen to people who had ideas about community center uses. Because by sitting down and talking to Janet, who, it's very true what you said, I mean, there was another misunderstanding, as if you were rabble-rousing. You were asking questions and you were, you were-- You were asking questions, and you were, you were listening. And so we got together and talked about what is it, because Janet was talking to people who, like Marge, who were interested in this community center use of the building. And so Janet and I got together, and I said, "I think it's important that the groups come together and talk, because I don't want to come to next town meeting and have it derailed." You know, I don't want to get to a point like last time in 2012 where people don't vote for it because there's other ideas coming forward. If there are other ideas coming forward, I want to talk to them now and have them hear what the seniors' needs are, and see if, make sure they understand that, and vice versa. So I would come back to the committee and say, "I really think it's important that we talk," and people were perceiving that I wasn't for a senior center from that. So that has been very frustrating. I've been thinking about this a lot, and visited the Lexington Senior Center and, and Community Center, because they're very clear when you go in and you say, "Where's the senior center?" This is a community center, you know, they're, but I, I did talk about how it was going, and I have, I continue to have a very strong feeling that we really need a place for the seniors to be, the senior center. I mean, I think that's really important. The question is whether some of the needs that Marge and, sorry, Marge and friends have, have been mentioning, to me, don't sound that different. It sounds like it would fit in with evening use and with, I don't believe that we have actually really sat down and had a mediated discussion where the two groups, and I even hate talking about it as two groups, because it's, we're a community, we're all people living in this town, and it's not two groups, it's just some differences of opinion within it. And I think it's really important that we do that, that we sit down. So my, if I were going to summarize, my feeling is I want this committee to go on as it is with its charge to build a senior center, but I would like that one of the charges of that, because we have done most of what we've said we would do, to be to sit down with the community center advocates and find out what it is that they're doing, and see, you know, what's, what's the least you could, would be happy with here, and what's the most you'd be happy with, and what, what would work for you, and what absolutely is really impossible to see that it works. We haven't really done that, you know, have had a mediated discussion to get through that. And I think that that discussion would not only lead to community building, but it would also lead to an understanding and an ability to move forward. And one thing that I don't agree with is that we can't go to next April if we do have that discussion. I think we should move forward with the senior center as-is, but say that that committee either has to incorporate some people, or incorporate some conversation about what those uses are. I don't, I just didn't see, when I sat down and talked to them, I didn't hear a lot of things. There wasn't a teen center, it wasn't a pool, it was, you know, I'm interested in seeing, it sounded like programming, you know, a lot of it seemed like it would be useful with programming. So that's my, that's my opinion. I think that we should go forward with the same charge, but I don't like the closed-minded attitudes that I've been hearing from different camps, so to speak, about whether we can get through to April Town Meeting and whether we should be listening to the others. So I would like to have that. I just want to check my notes that I didn't. I have no doubt from all the study that has been done and from seeing the senior center in use, that it is a wonderful thing and an important part of our community, and it's very exciting to have us moving forward. I'm sort of sorry that we didn't move forward, at least in planning during the recession. You know, I think it was very polite of the senior center committee to say, you know, "Things are hard, we're not going to go forward," but maybe in the future we should think that poor times are times that we should be thinking about the future for when it's better. That's all.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you. I am 68, and I've lived in town for 28 years. My concern is process. I am very much a process person, and frankly, I think this charge was put together before I came on the board, which was in 2014. I know it took a long time to set the committee up, but it would seem to me that the time to have had this debate was at the time the charge was put together rather than at this point. I am very concerned that this committee was following a charge that we gave them some time ago, and that the whole process would be disrupted if they now had to stop and take another look at it. And I frankly was not, I am very familiar with the senior center, I live about half a mile from it, but I was not paying attention when I was off the board to all the stuff that was happening in 2007 and 2011. I assume there was a lot of debate about this very issue, and the charge that came out of the board at the time they made it was to do a standalone senior center. I'd be concerned that we would vote to put this off the April Town Meeting after all this work, and if in fact citizens think it's better to have a combined facility, I would rather hear that discussion and debate at Town Meeting than have us make the decision here. It's only six months away, so if we're talking about delaying this for a long period of time, it doesn't seem to me that six months is going to make a huge difference now. So while I'm sympathetic to both sides, I haven't, I understand that the United Way Study talks about isolation of teenagers and all ages of people in town being a very serious issue that needs to be addressed, and a community center could respond to that, and I think it's needed. But for those reasons, I can't support changing the charge at this point.
Thank you, Peter.
Can I make one more?
Why don't you let me go first, because I haven't spoken yet, and then we can come back to people. So I just want to say, you know, I think I'm frustrated, but for opposite reasons of some people, and to get to what you were speaking about, Peter, this wasn't this board, but the Board of Selectmen did have an extensive discussion about whether or not the charge should include pursuing a community center, and we had that debate at that time, and chose very specifically to have a charge that was only to look at a senior center. I mean, that was a very deliberate choice, and that's what this committee has done and has gone forward with. So we have had that discussion, we have had that debate, that was the time for the community center to come forward. The reason we did it is because there hadn't been an identified need for a community center, and I think that there's still not an identified need. I appreciate, you know, your thoughts, Marge, and some of the other things I've heard, but it would be different for me if I were hearing this from the Recreation Department, or from community ed, or the schools, or other people, but I'm not. It's not an identifiable need in town, whereas the senior center and the need for a larger senior center is clearly an identifiable need in town, and one that we've been working on for a long time, and frankly, for too long. You know, I also have a lot of questions about the funding for a community center, who's funding the actual programs in that, if we did go that route. I think that the ideas for, if we're talking about programmatic needs for a community center, could still be explored. I don't think it's that continuing with just a senior center closes that discussion off completely, because I think that there's still room to do answer and do that work that you were speaking about, Marge, and try to get answers to those questions about what are the needs and what are the programs that are currently existing for sort of community, non-senior folks, and where are the gaps? And I think there would still be space, you know, maybe in the new senior center after hours, maybe in the current senior center when that's vacated. So I think there's still opportunities for exploring community center if that need is identified. But at this moment in town, we've clearly, for, you know, longer than I've lived here, identified the need for a new senior center, and it's time, we're at the point where we can move forward with that, where we've put a lot of work into that, and I would hate to see it go to waste again. We've gotten to this point a couple times before, and then just take a giant step backwards, and it takes a few years to get that momentum back. So I really worry about losing it again. So I agree with Peter that I think we need to keep the charge as-is. You know, again, there was a specific discussion and purpose for writing the charge as-is. I think, I guess it would have been two years ago, almost two years ago, and so I think that we should move forward with, with the current charge. Ching Sun?
So I would like to say that I do agree that I think there's been very clear to me that the development of a senior center and a community center are very different stages. However, I do think that we don't want to preclude the option of having a community center, and thus I think that it would be good if the senior center study committee would examine two options for a senior center, one, facility size, two, what they believe to be the needs of the senior center, and an oversized facility to present to Town Meeting, which the extra space, you know, we can talk about while it's in the process of being built. And so that would be my recommendation as far as what to look at, to look at two facilities to present to Town Meeting, one size to just be a senior center, and one size to be a senior center either maybe due to increased demand, if that becomes clear that there's more demand for a senior, we have the space to senior center services, we have the space to fulfill it, and/or, you know, if that demand doesn't materialize, we have the space to use it for other services.
Okay, so I think we need to take a vote on this, and the vote is really whether to keep the current senior center study committee charge as-is, or whether to change it. I've heard two people say that they want to keep it as-is, heard one person say that they would like it to change, include a community center, one person say they'd like it to change to look at two options, and for any, I'm not totally clear.
I want the charge not to change, but actually, really agree. I sort of always had this question about the space. I looked at the Arlington Street site, and I have a question whether there's room for expansion. I can't remember from, from visiting it. Do you remember? Because I like Ching Sun's idea, because I don't, I agree, and I think it was Pat Schaffling that said it really is a clear difference between how well-developed the idea is, but I would not want building a senior center to preclude building a community center or an expanded building, or, I wouldn't want that to preclude that in the future, or if people do become more clear. So there's two things I would want. I would want to keep the charge, but possibly add to the charge to have the conversation, and have a mediated conversation with the community center people to hear their ideas. We never, we had them coming in, but it was always, they were always being very polite and saying, you know, "We don't want to interfere." And I would like to be able to at least have them hear what it is that's really important for us to have, and for us to hear what it is that they're looking for. And the second is that I would like to be able to move forward and not say, "Oh, we're building a senior center, we absolutely cannot build a community center or a community center wing," or in the future.
Okay.
So the charge, the same, but with added conversation. Giving the advice to definitely have that conversation, which is not.
I just, yeah, I'll do one second. I just want to make something really clear, because in my discussions with the current members of the senior center study committee, that if we change the charge, this senior center study committee will fall apart, and that it is, so if we add something to it or change it to say they need to look at two options, we will no longer have a senior center study committee. So I just want that to be clear, because I think that, you know, Sharon and Peter danced around it a bit, but that is the outcome that will happen. So I just want everybody to be very clear that if we do modify it or add something to it, it will fall apart, and we will start over again, which means at least a delay of another, we're looking at at least Town Meeting 2017.
No, I do not want to change the charge. I just want to, I don't, I don't like this closed-minded, I don't even want to hear what you have to say. And so, but I don't want to change the charge. The most important thing to me is to build the senior center.
Okay.
Okay, I've got two points. First of all, I believe I read in the 2009 report that the Arlington Street site was going to be very challenging for a building of the size that is proposed just for the senior center alone with, I guess, the offices, so I think expansion would probably be pretty difficult. I mean, there are some wetlands issues and other things, ledge, whatever. Second point is move to retain the charge as-is. I want to move this conversation along. Somebody going to step in me?
You're moving to retain the charge?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say that we've done almost all that was in the charge. When you read the words of the charge, we have done almost all of that, except for the space, the programming of the space. There were, it seems to me that we have almost completed that charge. But I do want to, I don't think it says in there to bring, or did, to bring the question to Town Meeting 2016?
It doesn't have the year, no, but that is one of the Selectmen's goals, but that's on our side.
That's one of the Selectmen's goals, and I want to make sure that that happens. But is that, that's written into the charge?
No. 2016.
We voted as a committee to bring it forward. That was one of the first votes we took.
We did. I do also think we have to clarify, some of the decisions that this committee has made, I feel like will have to come to the Board of Selectmen sometime soon.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. So we will move forward with the current senior center study committee charge, and I want to thank you all for coming tonight.
FYI, FYI, I know you have to move on. The 2012 senior center proposal included a community center wing. If you look at the drawings, you'll see that. Okay? Thanks.
Okay, so while we transition out, I just ask you to do it somewhat quietly, because we do have to continue on with our meeting. So I see I've got our lawyers up here, but if we could get our representatives from the, yeah, if I could get the police department folks to come up, thank you.
I think we're going to need a screen.
Actually, why don't we do that while we're waiting? So we're just taking a small break. Thank you all for bearing with us. We just wanted to finish up our earlier conversation. While we wait for everybody to come back, I'm going to have Janet swear in any witnesses. If you're planning on speaking to this issue tonight, please stand.
Yeah, if you're, if you plan to speak at all, yeah, if you could stand and raise your hand, do you swear collectively to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Wonderful. Okay. And we're going to
The officer inquired if there are any other parties with the operator. The officer learned that he was a lone operator and only occupied the vehicle. The officer then was able to observe that the officer, the operator was unsteady on his feet, his eyes were bloodshot and glassy, and there was an odor of alcoholic beverage on his breath as he spoke. The officer asked the operator if he consumed any alcoholic beverages, and where he had been coming from. The operator said he had two shots at the Nishova ski area, then went to Extapa for margarita. The officer requested this operator to perform field sobriety tests, in which the operator of the vehicle agreed to do. The first test was the one-legged stand test. And in doing this test, the subject lost his balance almost immediately, and stopped the test on his own, telling the officer, "I failed." The officer then asked the subject if he'd like to do another test, and the subject replied, "No, I am done. I am drunk." Due to the motor vehicle accident, the officer's observations that the subject was unsteady on his feet, his observations of alcohol on his breath, his eyes being bloodshot and glassy, the failed field sobriety test, and the subject's own admissions that he was drunk, the operator was arrested for drunk driving. As a part of the booking, the operator was given the opportunity to take a breath test, in which he took one and scored readings of .24, .24, three times the legal limit. This was a valid test, and the simulator reading was a .08, which is what is required within legal limits. On February 23rd, following this incident, Lieutenant Kogan, who's here tonight, met with the management of Extapa, and advised them of this particular incident, and requested that they preserve any and all receipts and the video of the interior video of this night of the bar for the Board of Selectmen. I believe Lieutenant Kogan had an opportunity to review the video with members of Extapa management. Following, Lieutenant Kogan did submit a memo, I believe, which the board has. On June 1st, the subject of the arrest did plea out in Concord District Court to the OUI offense. The subject admitted to sufficient facts to warrant a finding of guilt, and received a continuance without a finding for a period of one year. As a part of the plea, the subject was asked where he had his last drink on the night of the incident, and the subject indicated on the record that it was at Extapa. That's essentially a synopsis of the facts.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, then can we hear from the folks from Extapa? And if you can just go up to the microphone and press a little button with the face on it to turn it on.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Felici. I represent the Extapa Mexican Restaurant. And with me tonight is the owner of the restaurant, Eric Brambilla, manager Francisco Preciado, the assistant manager Cassandra Hefford, and the bartender on duty that night, Juan Munoz. I don't know why the board prefers to have questions and answers. I do know that there was several officers that indicated that they were here to testify. I don't know if there's anything more that the Acton Police would like to submit to the board before I ask a question or two regarding the report.
Sure. Is there anything that you guys would like to add before we do questions from Extapa?
I have nothing further at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then you can go with your questions.
If I, if I may, Officer, I might not be pronouncing the name properly, I'm sorry, but is it Osterhold?
Correct.
Officer Osterhold indicates in his report that when he observed the operator of that vehicle that night, that he found, when he talked to him at the scene where he went into the snowbank, that he only observed a slight odor of alcoholic beverages emanating from his person. Is that what he indicates in his report?
That is true. That's what it indicates in his report, sir.
And the subject did indicate to Officer Osterhold that he only had one margarita at the Extapa before he got involved in the accident. Is that right?
That is correct.
I have nothing further, Officer.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board members? Peter?
Was there a video available? The report mentions a video.
We're willing to address that. I was expecting to put the witnesses, you know, through examination if the board prefers...
We do it a little formally here, so if you have people that would like to speak, why don't we have them speak?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions for the officer, so...
Yeah.
That would be fine. I would be glad to do that. I certainly would present the evidence as best we could from the point of view, but I would like to have the witnesses be able to speak, Sam.
Of course. Yes. So why don't we have you have your witnesses speak, and then we'll do questions from the board members.
Very good. Mr. Munoz? I know that Mr. Munoz has a cold tonight, but he's going to try to speak as best as he could. But if you prefer, I'd ask him some questions so that we can move it along as quickly as possible. Mr. Munoz, how long have you worked at the Extapa? Can I ask you?
Eleven months, almost a year.
Okay. And how long have you been a bartender?
Three years.
Are you tip certified in training for alcohol service?
Yes.
And were you tip service certified at the time of this incident back in February of this year?
Uh huh.
Now, at about 10:30 that night, was the restaurant closing, or coming close to a close of business?
Close of business at 11:00. The guy is coming in, 10:20, I think.
And when this particular person came in, was it about 10:30 at night when you were about to close?
Yeah, around 10:30, yes.
And were you at the bar, or were you behind the bar cleaning up when this particular individual came into the restaurant?
It was when I back to the kitchen, I back to the bar, the guy is sitting right in the bar. I don't see him when he's come to the door.
So you did not see him when he came through the door?
No, I don't see him, yeah.
So the first chance you had to observe him was when you came back to the bar area from behind the bar?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And when you first observed this individual, what did you observe about him sitting at the bar?
Sitting normal, and he's, he's saying, "Hi, how are you?" And I'm saying, "Oh, good, thank you. What can I get you?" He ordered margarita. He's fine. He don't give any signals or nothing, and I started making margarita. He ordered food about same time, and then...
What did he order?
Margarita. And then he ordered food.
What did he order for food?
Chimichanga.
Did you have any trouble understanding him when he placed the order for the chimichanga?
No, he's talking normal. Yeah, I don't see nothing strange with him, so...
Now, based on your tips training, does your tips training indicate to you signs that you should be looking for when someone orders either drinks or food at the bar at Extapa?
Yes, correct. But he didn't give any signs or nothing, so I see normal, that's what I said to him.
Did, do you know if there are any other patrons of the restaurant when this individual sat down at the bar and ordered the chimichanga and the margarita?
I had two customers there, but only those guys, but he's talking to two guys there.
While you were serving this individual, was he talking to the other customers?
Customers there, yeah.
And did you notice any, or did you observe any, anything unusual about his behavior when he was talking to the other customers?
No, he's talking normal and everything. I don't see nothing strange with him.
And did he also order a glass of water while he...
Glass of water, yes.
And did you notice anything about his behavior or his speech when he ordered that?
No, nothing strange. Correctly, started eating chips and water and salsa and everything there. Normal, yeah.
Did you get identification from him when he came to the restaurant?
Yes, he has my ID, yeah.
And did it seem to be a valid ID?
Yes, correct.
Did you have any trouble understanding him when he talked to you about his ID?
No.
And how long was this person in the restaurant?
Around 40 minutes, I think. 40, 45 minutes, yeah.
And did he finish his dinner?
Almost. He take a little bit corn and chips, and he had a little bit more chips, I put more chips in the bag.
Okay, so he took home, was he at home? Did he ask if he could take it home?
Yeah.
Did you have any trouble understanding him when he said he wanted to take home some of the chimichanga?
No.
And did you observe anything about this individual, Mr. Munoz, when he went to leave the restaurant area where he was sitting?
When he stand up, he had a little problem to put his jacket. I walk around the bar, and I go ask him, and he, a cab or...
Well, take this one step at a time. Did you observe them when he was getting ready to leave? And you observed him have some trouble getting his jacket on?
Yes.
And as a result of seeing him having some trouble getting his jacket on, what did you do?
I walk into, close to him, and I start asking, "You okay? You need, you want me to call a cab?" He said, "No, I'm fine. I'm living across the street right here. I'm not driving, so you okay?" Took like a couple, maybe two minutes there.
So you asked him if you could get him a cab?
Yeah.
And he said to you...
He said, "I'm fine. I'm not driving. I'm not driving."
He said, "I'm not driving?"
Yes. He said, "I live across the street."
And did you offer at that point to get a cab for him?
Yeah.
And did you walk him out to the door?
Yeah, to the exit door, yeah.
And do you remember if that was captured on the video that was taken inside the restaurant that night? Was that part of the video?
Yes, correct.
And you tried to get him a cab if you wanted it, but he told you he wasn't driving? He lived right down the street?
Yes, he said he don't, he don't need it.
And then, then did you watch him walk out of the restaurant?
Yeah, I watched him outside, and I closed the door.
Okay. I have nothing further, this way is.
Janet?
Can I ask for the spelling, just the spelling of the last name for our...
Mr. Munoz is M-U-N-O-Z.
Okay, thank you. We might, we might need assistance with that, just for the record, because our recording secretary needs to get it down correctly, so thank you.
No problem. And I would, I would call Cassandra Hereford. Cassandra, could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Cassandra Hereford.
And are you an assistant manager at Extapa back on February 13th of 2015?
Yes, I was.
And what hours were you working that night?
What was it?
What hours were you working?
Afternoon, so like 5:00 to close.
Okay, and were you closing that night?
Yes.
And could you describe generally the atmosphere in the restaurant at about 10:30 on that night?
Well, I think as we all know, there's not a lot going on in Acton, so it is pretty quiet. We usually don't get a lot of customers after 10:00 or 10:30, so there was only a couple people at the bar as usual.
And did you, while, in the 30 to 40 minutes, as Mr. Munoz testified, that this individual was in the restaurant, did you have occasion to notice anything unusual in regards to his appearance or his actions while at the bar area of the restaurant?
No, nothing unusual. Like I said, there's nothing around going on at 10:30. We usually don't even get customers. So if he would have been acting out of the ordinary, I'm pretty sure I would have noticed.
And are you tip certified as of February 2015?
Yes, yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the signs of alcohol influence that you're trained to observe and to act upon when you have a customer that displays those signs of alcohol influence?
Yes.
And did this particular individual, in the 30 or 40 minutes he was in the restaurant, display any of those signs that you are taught to look for and to take action upon?
No, not at all.
Did you review a video of the surveillance area, of the restaurant area that was taken that night?
Yes.
And you do that with Lieutenant, Lieutenant Kogan?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And what did you observe about this particular individual as he was leaving, after having his chimichanga and his margarita?
Well, at the end, he was having issues putting his jacket on, so the bartender goes around, Juan goes around the bar, and talks to him a little bit, and towards the door when they're about to leave, when he's about to leave, they're talking, and then I was told by Juan that he was asking for a cab or for help, because he was obviously intoxicated at this point. But he said that he was not driving, that he lived around the corner, and he was walking.
And Juan helped, Juan assisted him to leave the restaurant?
Yes.
I have nothing further. Any questions on board?
Wait, so when he assisted him, did he...
Cassandra?
Wait, did, actually, I had a question for Juan. Did he see him go to the car? He said he wasn't driving, but was he assisted outside? And then did he, did anybody see him go to a car?
Did you?
I know that...
Sorry, you just got to go to the microphone.
Juan, Juan, go to the microphone. That's a good question.
No, I don't see, I don't see him. He's even like a couple, couple feet from the door, that's it, yeah. I don't see why he go to the car.
Thank you.
Peter's got a question.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Cassandra. Is, is the video still available?
That's what Mr. Brambilla was going to address right now.
Okay, well, that's fine.
She can address it as well.
Well, I mean, if you want to present it through somebody else, that's fine. If that question gets answered, that's okay.
No, I, for the, for the purpose of not duplicating our efforts, it's late, I was going to have the people that know how the video surveillance works testify to that. Mr. Brambilla, please. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Eric Brambilla, par owner at the Extapa.
And how long have you been in existence at the Extapa enacted?
Since we opened.
How long has that been?
Last September, a year.
And have you had any history of any incidents prior to this incident in February 13th regarding any issues whatsoever in the service of alcohol to patrons at the Extapa restaurant?
Never had.
Now, at some point about a week after this incident, let me just make sure you're with us from the beginning, were you there that particular night on February 13th?
No.
Okay, now, about a week after the incident, did you have occasion to meet with Lieutenant Kogan regarding an incident that occurred in the town of Acton that evening?
Yes.
And did you meet with Lieutenant Kogan to discuss what had happened?
Yes.
And in regards to that, did you talk to Lieutenant Kogan about a video that takes surveillance of the premises inside the restaurant?
Yes.
And did you tell him that that particular surveillance is taken every night, and that it was available for the detective to view?
Yes.
And did you, as Detective Kogan's report indicates, he says that both you, Eric Brambilla, and Cassandra, the assistant manager, were extremely cooperative with this process. Were you cooperative with Lieutenant Kogan? And at the end of the meeting, did you go through the video with Lieutenant Kogan?
Yeah, I took him inside of the office, and we had the monitor there, and I showed him everything since the guy got there, all the way to the end.
All right, and how long did this particular individual stay in the restaurant that night?
I don't know exactly, but it was between 35 and 40 minutes.
And in a synopsis, can you tell the members of the board what you see when you watch the video of this particular 30 or 35 minutes in the restaurant?
We put it to the beginning, like 10:20 to start before he was there, and then we just seen him walking in.
Did you make observations about him walking in?
Well, he was fine.
you're with us from the beginning, were you there that particular night on February 13th?
No.
Okay, now about a week after the incident, did you have occasion to meet with Lieutenant Colgan regarding an incident that occurred in, in the town of Acton that evening?
Yes.
And did you meet with Lieutenant Colgan to discuss what had happened?
Yes.
And in regards to that, did you talk to Lieutenant Colgan about a, a video that takes surveillance of the premises inside the restaurant?
Yes.
And did you tell him that that particular surveillance is taken every night and that it was available for the detective to view?
Yes.
And did you, as Detective Colgan's report indicates, he says that both you, Eric Brambilla and Cassandra, the assistant manager, were extremely cooperative with this process. Were you cooperative with Lieutenant Colgan? And at the end of the meeting, did you go through the video with Lieutenant Colgan?
Yeah, I, I took him inside of the office and we had the monitor there and I showed him everything since the guy got there on the way to the end.
All right, and how long did this particular individual stay in the restaurant that night?
I don't know exactly, but it was between thirty-five and forty minutes.
And in a, in a synopsis, can you tell the members of the board what you see when you watch the video of this particular thirty or thirty-five minutes in the restaurant?
We put it to the beginning, like ten, twenty to start before he was there, and then we just seen him walking in.
Did you make observations about him walking in?
Well, he was fine. He just walked in, sat down, and he was waiting for like a server. Then a few minutes later, Juan came in the bar, gave him the menu, then like he starts making a drink and, or he asked him for his ID and then he looked at it and they looked like they were chatting, like everything was normal. Afterwards, he's eating chips, salsa, whatever, water, then he get his drink. He was there for like twenty-five, thirty minutes and then paid his check, I think it was a credit card.
And the, the officer's report indicates it was a $23 and 11 cent charge, right?
Oh, yeah, it was for the chimichanga plate and then the one drink.
Would that be consistent with one margarita in an order of chimichanga?
Yes.
Dinner? And what does the surveillance video show next?
He paid, whatever, and then he stands up and he's putting his jacket, but he has one of those, like for the snow, I don't know what exactly they're called, and he was having like trouble putting it in. And then he just starts walking, he put it in, starts walking, and Juan walked around the bar and he caught up to him and he told, that's what he said, that he told him if he needed a cab or something.
And did he wa, did he, and does the surveillance video show him walking on his own to the, to the exit?
Yes, and I think it was like two minutes or three minutes, they were talking right at the door. Like, it looks like he's like holding the door and the guy's like right in front of him and they're just talking, and I think that's what he said, that he was telling him.
Okay, and then as far as you were told, this man told Juan that he didn't need a cab because he lived down the street?
Yes.
And was walking? And that's the last of the video picks up of him?
That's it, yeah.
Now, can you explain for the members of the board how the DVR system works, because the video is not here tonight?
The DVR, it records every day, so every day is recording, and whatever hits thirty days, it deletes itself. So every day it's a new video and it keeps deleting the one that's thirty days old.
So this isn't a tape that you could retrieve if you wanted to retrieve, like the old style cassette tapes or, or beta tapes, or anything like that?
That's what I thought, but the, the system doesn't work like that.
Was this the first time you'd ever been asked to try to maintain or retrieve some surveillance footage in the restaurant?
Yes, we never had like, you know, no incident or nothing like that before.
So you had no idea that it self-deleted every thirty days?
No. I found out at the end when I called the company. I'm like, hey, I'm trying to get this video from this date, and they're like, oh, you should have got it a long time. It's too late now. Like, it deletes every thirty days. They never explained to me when I got the system.
And when, when you received notice from my office that Lieutenant Colgan, and rightly so, wanted us to prepare the video to this hearing, did you do everything you could?
Yes, I was ready to bring it and whatever, get it on this, but there's something, but I didn't know it was too late.
And is that because the computer doesn't allow you to go back after it's thirty days old to retrieve it?
Correct.
Is there any questions, the board, in regard to that?
I'm just going to read a legal notice for a hearing at 8:45 and then we'll get back to this, sorry. Notice hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 in Acton Town Hall on September 28th, 2015 at 8:45 PM on the application of Indoor Sports Management, Inc. Doing Businesses Overtime Bar located at 30 Great Road on an application for a change of director. Okay, now we can go back. Peter, questions?
Is there audio on, on this tape, tape system you have as well as video?
No.
And, and how long has Juan worked for you?
About eleven months.
Eleven months, okay. You, you require when people are hired to be TIPS certified?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have regular updates or ongoing training for people who work in your establishment?
Every three months.
Okay, thank you.
Fran? How often do people refuse to, how often do you have to refuse to serve people? Like, how, how many times per week or year or month do you see someone intoxicated enough that you have to say sorry?
Oh, we probably seen since we've been open a year, maybe like, as a bartender, he's around six or seven, doesn't he?
Six or seven times?
Before that he refused them and they leave mad or whatever, but I'm like, sorry.
And how often do people seem intoxicated when they're leaving, that you have to offer them a cab or that kind of thing? Like, happened that night?
I don't, I've never seen a problem like that.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear.
I've never seen problems like that, like.
Oh, so that was the only time?
Yeah.
All year that somebody seemed? I just have to note that we've had this problem of tape being, with another establishment, with the tape being, you know, them not realizing it.
Yeah.
Realizing that we maybe need to remind all the businesses in our town that this is a problem and that they have a problem.
And I think it's like that in every system now, nowadays. It's like thirty days and then it deletes.
So if you have to get it, if you find out from the police that there's a reason to save it, then you can pull that out?
You got to get it at that moment.
And then you put a new tape in?
Yes, don't let it pass.
Okay, so it seems like there's a problem with that. And also, one can, as a bartender, if you see someone leaving, I mean, even if they're walking, they're unsafe, so I'm just wondering, it's, I mean, this isn't exactly important in determining if they were served, they were over-served, but this is for afterwards. I just want to note that one can call the police, right, and say that somebody's leaving who doesn't look safe to travel by foot or, and I'm just thinking that that should be standard procedure, you know, that if somebody's leaving and they don't look stable, that the police should be called so that they can make sure they get home safely.
I think it was testimony, Madam, was that he, he didn't seem to show any signs of that type of intoxication, and he walked all the way from the bar to the front door and he didn't make any observations of anything that was so erratic that this man was in danger at all. It was just a question of, he said, "Can I get you a cab?" because he had trouble getting his sleeves into his outer coat and said, you know, maybe I should help him.
Right, I think that was.
And he offered to help him. So I think he was doing the right thing, but.
It sounds astute, but I, I'm suggesting that people should go farther and just let the police help him anyway, but in terms of the serving.
I think if he told him he was driving, clearly he would have called the police and said, "I have a customer here that's going to get into a car." He told him, and no fault of my client, obviously, but this fellow gave him a story and said, "I, I live down the street. I'm not," and he said, "I am not driving," and that's when Mr. Munoz said, "Okay, take care of yourself," and he walked out.
Right, and I'm just thinking, down the street from top of, it's in Nagod Park.
It's in Nagod Park, this is.
So to get to the nearest place, you have to go on, unless you're going through the woods. If somebody says down the street, they're obviously going to have to go on Route 2A, which is very dangerous if you're stumbling, and so, and I don't even think there's sidewalks right there.
And I don't think, there wasn't any evidence from either the police officer or from Mr. Munoz that this man was stumbling. He had a little trouble getting his coat on, and that's what the police report says. He had.
I see.
He had, he had trouble, according to the officer specifically, he said, "We observed the subject putting on his outer garment in the, in the area just before leaving the restaurant." So I think that's what was giving Mr. Munoz some cause of concern, was he's having a little trouble getting his coat on, but he wasn't, wasn't stumbling, walking to the door, so.
Right.
I think once he said, "I'm walking, I live down the street," you know, I think he did the right, at that point, just made sure he didn't drink anymore and he left, but the record's clear that he only had one drink in our establishment.
Right.
Janet? Do you have any idea, do, do any of the restaurant workers know where he was parked? I mean, if he, he ended up in a car driving into a snowbank, it just, nobody really knows. You, you stop watching and then you don't know where he went.
No, they were closing up. It was, it was quarter of eleven and they closed the restaurant then, so once he left, they had no reason to, to look for a car, especially since he told me he was walking.
I have a quick question. There was a mention in, in the memo from Lieutenant Colgan about the, you weren't able to find the receipt, but then it said you were able to determine that he paid with a credit card and he paid $23.11, so did you find the receipt eventually?
Mr. Brambilla can address that for sure.
He took both receipts, but I showed the officer, like the transactions for, for the day, for that day, and you could see all the credit cards for that day.
Okay. And do you remember what time he left the restaurant exactly? Was it at eleven or?
It was right before eleven.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
It does say, we observed in the video, the subject clearly stumbled in the bar area while putting on his outer garment, so he was stumbling, but, but this wasn't, was this observed by, at the time? I mean, is that what made you worry about them, is, I would ask?
Mr. Munoz, do you understand the question?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, in a way, I feel a little funny asking about these things that are afterwards, because really what we're trying to determine is whether you gave him the margarita when he was already intoxicated, because that's, that's really the question that.
When I served him, he's, he's looked fine. He's looked fine. That's why I served him. Yeah, we stand up that way, when he looked like.
It was hard for me to hear because of your cold, I'm sorry.
He, he said he looked fine when he served him the margarita. It was when he got up after the margarita that he said he had some concern, he had a little trouble.
Right, right, so, so there's two different things here. I keep being focused on afterwards, but really what we're asking is what, how he was before, which the video didn't, I can't remember, it didn't, the video didn't show, or you didn't see anything before?
Well, the video, I think the video speaks for itself, Madam Selectmen, in that Lieutenant's doing his job properly, and he specifically says that the only time that there's any issue with this person's observations in his actions is after.
Is after, right.
He's had this margarita, so obviously at the time he served, Lieutenant Colgan watched that whole video with my client, and he didn't observe any issues with this particular patron all during that process, which is the key process.
Right, right.
Lieutenant Colgan, I'm wondering if you could actually address that, if you could just talk about what you saw in the video, and specifically again about when the subject's entering the, the bar?
It was quite some time ago.
Yes, sorry.
That I saw this video. And I do remember the, the end of the video much more clearly than I do the, the beginning. But what I remember distinctly was when he was leaving and he stood up, trying to put a coat on, taking several steps backwards and then three or four steps forward and laying almost onto the bar. What I think the three of us kind of gasped when we, when we saw this.
Yeah, okay. And then you saw him walk out with Mr. Munoz?
Walked to the door.
To the door.
And the bartender closed the door and locked it once the subject walked outside.
Did you see Mr., or the bartender talk, speak with the patron on the way out?
I, I would say I did. I saw him walking behind him as he exited. I couldn't tell if they were speaking or what they were saying. Obviously, there's no audio.
Right, okay.
And you, but you don't have any recollection of anything on the way in when he's walking into the bar?
I do remember him walking in and then kind of looking around, waiting to see, I think, if someone was there, because it, it did appear the restaurant was pretty empty at that time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have further?
I don't have any, I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, I don't have any further testimony at all, but I certainly would address the, the board very, very briefly.
Sure, first I'm going to ask our attorney, Jessica, if you have any questions.
I just have one question for Mr. Munoz.
Mr. Munoz?
Actually, two questions. What time did you serve the margarita to the patron?
About ten, twenty-five, I think.
Ten, twenty-five.
Twenty, around, I'm not sure, but yeah.
And how many ounces of alcohol, alcohol are in a margarita when you make it?
It's one shot. Two ounces, I think.
Two, two ounces.
Two ounces?
Yeah.
I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Very briefly, Madam Chairman, obviously, the Acton Police were doing, were doing their job here, and there's no question that my clients are a family restaurant. There is a bar area there, so clearly people do come to have margaritas with their dinners, but the Acton Police were doing what they had to do based on the fact that this person went into a snowbank shortly after leaving my client's establishment. But what I think the board has to focus on is what, if anything, this establishment did or didn't do that would cause a license infraction. Clearly, when you have someone serving a, a minor, serving a nineteen-year-old a beer, that's a clear violation, and that's, this board is here to reprimand that kind of conduct. It's clear that if someone's had seven or eight drinks in your establishment over the course of the night and you take no action to shut that person down, that's a clear violation, and this board is here to reprimand those kind of licensees. But this is a question of a client of mine who has been nothing but a, I would suggest, a stellar licensee in this town for only a year now, but he's had a clear record that this is a good family establishment, family-owned, that basically caters to a family restaurant crowd, and people do come in to have a margarita or two. But in this particular case, you have a person who comes into the bar area of the restaurant, and there's only an assistant manager and a bartender and a couple of patrons. So if he had shown signs that he was under the influence, it would have been, I would suggest, very easy for them to pick up if he had shown these clear signs. In this case, he ordered one margarita, and the record is clear that my clients were, according to the Lieutenant's report, quote, "extremely cooperative with everything that he had asked of them." And they gave him a margarita because he showed no signs whatsoever of the TIPS certified training signs that they should be looking for in determining whether to serve somebody or not serve them. And there's no question that this man was, apparently did not have his wits about him when he left the restaurant, and that's why he, he drove into that snowbank. But the question is, at the time he was served, that's what the board has to look at, and it is, there's no evidence really whatsoever, and the Acton Police have, like I say, they've done their job and they've brought us to your attention, but they don't indicate in any way, shape, or form that there were signs when this man walked into the restaurant that he was under the influence. And you had the tape, which a pitcher speaks a thousand worlds. Lieutenant Colgan was very fair in saying, "I didn't observe anything when he came in that would give any sign whatsoever that this person was over-served." And throughout the process, the twenty-five, thirty minutes that he's there, eating his chimichanga and having that one margarita, there's nothing in the surveillance tape, according to Lieutenant Colgan's own account, that indicates that he's did anything that would give rise to that type of behavior, that conduct, or anything else that would indicate that this was a man who should not have been served that one drink. And even at the scene, the arresting officer indicates that this man, he's up close, having a long conversation with him while he's talking to him after the accident, and he indicates that he only has a slight odor of alcohol. One would expect that if he had that much to drink, that the officer, well-trained in operating under the influence scenarios, would be telling this board in his report that this man had either a strong odor of alcohol on his breath or at least a moderate odor of alcohol, but the officer uses the word "slight odor." So how was Mr. Munoz supposed to pick that up forty-five minutes earlier when he hasn't even had that margarita yet? So I would suggest to you that he acted reasonably under the circumstances, served the man his dinner with some water, chips and salsa, and he had a margarita with it, a two-ounce margarita, and that that does not rise to the level of a chapter 138 violation. And I would suggest to you that the evidence simply isn't there to warrant a violation. If this board is of the opinion, after hearing the very little bit of evidence that I would suggest there is against my client, that they had done something to violate that statute, that in this case, having a clean track record for a year, that it would only amount to some type of probationary condition, but it certainly doesn't rise to the level where this board should consider any type of suspension of their license at this point in time, and I would suggest to you that there isn't a violation to even be found under chapter 138, and I would let the board consider the actual evidence that's before it and the lack of any evidence of culpability on behalf of the, on behalf of the establishment.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, any questions from Detective French, or Jessica? No. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much for everybody who spoke. So, just, you know, reminding everybody about what Constance Office sent around. So the next step is determining whether or not we think there was a violation, and the violation requires findings and that there are four elements to a violation, that somebody was a visibly intoxicated person, was sold or delivered an alcoholic beverage on a premise licensed under chapter 138. So that's really what we're talking about right now. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Janet?
Well, based on, in the absence of the video, but based on.
Well, based on, in the absence of the video, but based on testimonial evidence and also just the fact, the record that he was served one drink, I don't find, I don't think we have enough basis for finding a violation because I, the evidence that we have suggests that he was not visibly inebriated when he came in. He obviously must have been when he was getting ready to leave, but the, the key point is what his condition was when he came in. And, and he, then he drank one margarita, which if he had been drinking six of them, you know, before then or something, and then whatever, but he had one margarita, so.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
I agree. There's no evidence on which we could find facts that, on this record, that this patron was visibly intoxicated when he was served. It's, it's a strange situation. We've seen it before. Five minutes after he leaves the establishment, he is, well, actually, he gets in an accident, but then is tested. The testing was probably later, which means he probably had a higher alcohol level when he left the bar, and now when he was tested, it was .24, which is three times the legal limit to drive. So, I assume he was intoxicated when he arrived at the bar. His blood level didn't go up to .24 on one margarita, but I am aware that even intoxicated individuals can appear not intoxicated. So, I don't see any evidence under this particular statute that he was, that this patron was visibly intoxicated when he was served the margarita. So, I don't think I can find a violation.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Freddie, you have a choice.
Yeah, I feel similarly. But I would like us to maybe sometime, take time to look at these things. Maybe it's not in our jurisdiction, but to make suggestions to the businesses. Really, what we want to try to do is avoid people driving drunk, and if there's ways to work with the businesses to make that happen, I think we should look at it. But in this case, I agree.
Okay. Jameson, anything?
I feel similarly as the people who've spoken before me, but I also would like to comment that I do find it, I do find it somewhat concerning that the video, which was viewed by policemen and management at Ixtapa, was not preserved immediately upon that viewing, you know, with the idea that this would likely, or this may be needed later. And so, I am concerned by that fact.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I would just agree. I mean, I think under the kind of rules that we have to work within, it's not clear that a visibly intoxicated person was served, but I share Peter's concern. You know, I, drinking one margarita isn't going to push you up to a .24, so he clearly was drinking prior to coming in. And I understand that's the hardest situation for, for bartenders to deal with because you can not look or, or appear very visibly intoxicated when you are, and I think that's likely what, what happened here. And, and it's unfortunate because, I mean, our job is to, to try to protect the public, and we're lucky that he only drove into a snowbank. He didn't drive into a person or another vehicle and, and kill somebody or, or kill himself. So, you know, I, I know it's hard to, to say this to you, but anything you can do to, to try to, it sounds like you're doing the right things, but you know, obviously to, to keep aware, and hopefully this will serve as a reminder that we have to be very vigilant about these situations, you know, and I, I just encourage you to, to do that and to understand that having a, a liquor license is a, is a privilege in town, and, and I think you're taking it seriously. You know, by the way, you've handled this tonight, and I, and I hope you continue to do so. So, it sounds like nobody here thinks that there was cause for a, a finding a violation, so I'm wondering if somebody could make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, I'll move that we find no violation of Chapter 138.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would like to remind you to, to save if there's any trouble, to absolutely make sure you save the video, and to call the police if you have any doubt whatsoever.
Great, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight, and thank you guys for coming as well. Okay, our last hearing is on the application for indoor sports management for a change of directors. Representative there? Wonderful. Could you just come up? You can either come up to this microphone, the chair, or to the podium, either way, and then just introduce yourself and, and what you're asking for tonight. And thank you for bearing with us. I apologize that we're later than anticipated. Just hit the button with the face to turn it on.
Say on or off?
There you go.
Say on. Hi, my name is Tom Moore. My wife and I are the sole owners of Teamworks, which is headquartered here in Acton. Teamworks is a group of recreational sports facilities. And inside our facility here in Acton, which is, which is our headquartered, we have a restaurant and bar, and I'm here to apply for a change in the director from Tom McLaughlin to myself. The reason for the change is, while this is a little bit late in happening, Tom died unfortunately and unexpectedly five years ago, and as the lead investor, I ended up taking over the business, and this was an administrative matter that I just missed. And it came to my attention this summer that we hadn't done it, and so, at that point, I submitted the application, and that's why I'm here today.
Great. Are there questions from board members? I think there were some comments from the planning department about working out the situation, about the number of seats that you have there. I was just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit.
Yes, I wanted to mention that as well. A, a separate and distinct matter is that we've renovated the indoor facility. We did that last year, and with the intention of increasing the size of the restaurant bar area from 40 seats to 67. It's a bigger area, but there's questions with regard to septic. And we've been working independently with the Board of Health to gain approval for that seating, and, and I hope that happens. I, I wish that could happen tonight. I wish this could all happen in the same evening, but I don't, that's outside of my control. My understanding is the Board of Health is meeting later, in a, in a couple of weeks in October to discuss that matter. But that's, that's the overview of what's going on.
And I'll just draw, oh, Janet, go ahead.
This is just a, a nit. I'm just wondering, I was looking at the paperwork, I'm wondering who Kevin O'Connell Moore is, because he's signed the, the lease agreement, and then I know you're Tom Moore, and I thought you're the president of, you're sort of the one person serves all roles in the LLC, but I didn't know if maybe Kevin O'Connell Moore may be related, has, has taken on some responsibility.
I own the business. Kevin O'Connell is responsible for the operation of the business. So, he oversees all the operations, and if you started asking me lots of questions about details, I'd say I need Kevin here. So, that's, that's the difference in the roles.
Okay, okay, thanks. Peter?
Yeah, I, I, you're just, you're, you're running the, the facility where the restaurant and bar is with 40 seats right now. Is that what's happening?
We're running it with 40 seats at this moment.
And you're looking for an increase from the building department and zoning, I guess?
Yes, from 40 to 67.
I don't know. Have you seen this memo that we got from Roland, Roland Bartle, the town planner?
I saw one a couple of days ago. I, if you want to show it to me, I can, with, with his recommendations.
Right, he's got several recommendations about how we should handle this.
I, I have seen that, yes.
Normally, you would come back here for a site plan review, I believe, after, if you want to expand. That's part of the process as well as building and zoning. You need a site plan change in your site plan to go from 40 to 67. And so, the question is how we handle it, given that you're trying to expand the number of seats as well as, as transfer, transfer the ownership. Is that what we're here about in the first place, I guess, right? Okay. I would recommend that we condition the license transfer on no more than 40 seats and, and require the owner to come back to us to get the appropriate change in his special permit to go to 67. I mean, Roland has four or five different options here, but that seems to be the one I'd be most comfortable with, although if people feel otherwise, I'd accept probably any of these, but.
Janet?
Well, it was, it's my understanding, I mean, we should probably say that, you know, just out of condition, that the applicant has to work out that issue with Roland. I mean, I think that it, it currently is only authored, they're only authorized for 40 seats because they've got some issues with the Board of Health and planning about the additional seating. So, yeah, so I think.
Yeah, I, I think what, what I understand Roland to be saying is if we were to issue this per, permit and as part of that agree to allow you to go to 67 seats, we would have to find that's a minor amendment to your special permit that doesn't require a hearing. And I'm not really comfortable doing that without Roland here and explaining to us what, whether this is minor or not. So, I would prefer just to say, "Okay, we'll transfer the ownership, and you're still restricted to 40 seats until you come back and get permission to go to 67."
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I don't think we're in a position to approve an increased number of seats, given that we haven't had a presentation. So, yeah, if it has to come back to us at some point, then it has to come back.
Well, that was my question. I didn't think it necessarily had to come back to us because some of Roland's options, it seemed like we could approve it and then say, "We're approving it at 40," but.
We do what we have to do.
Leaving it up to, you know, zoning, health, and building to determine whether or not to increase the seats. Because I don't know that that necessarily has to come back before the selectmen. I think it has to go before the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner. So, he had one suggestion that we'd approve it or, it's limited to 40 seats, or, or such other number of seats as the Board of Health and Building Commissioner may determine. That was one of his suggestions.
Yeah, but if you read on that, that includes us making a finding that this amendment from 40 to 67 is a minor.
Is a minor.
Amendment that doesn't require a public, a public meeting to approve it.
And you're saying it, it might, yeah.
Well, I, I don't know. It's probably minor, but, you know, I'm not comfortable with.
Okay, no, I, I, yeah, that's fine, okay. Does anybody have concerns with that? Peter's suggestion of approving it conditioned on that it's on 40 seats, not be more than 40 seats. So, do you want to make that motion? I think it's number.
Yeah, that's B, I think. I, I move that we approve the license transfer in condition, on the condition that there shall not be more than 40 seats until such time when the special permit number 04/20/04397 is amended at a later date.
Second. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, you are all set. We'll probably see you again.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can I, I want to add one more question. Is there ever any conflict between, I mean, this is a facility that has a lot of kids playing sports and having a bar right there. How does that work?
You know, that's a really interesting question about the business, and I'll try not to talk for 20 minutes. I'll, I'll try to do it in two. It's actually like we have two businesses, an adult business and a, and a children's business. The adult business tends to take off at seven or eight at night, and the children's business ends around that. When the kids are in there, the families tend to congregate in the restaurant. We serve pizzas, we serve hamburgers. You know, mom and dad may have a glass of wine or, or a beer, but it tends to be more food-oriented. And then in the evening with the, with the adults, the kids are really out of the building for the most part. And, and again, we're still serving food and beverage, but it's more, you know, somebody's having a beer after a game than, than serving food. But, yeah, we're very conscious of that, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just something that we play by here. But, but we generally keep the kids out of the building when the adults are in and vice versa.
My son used to play like 11 at night, 11:30, you know, when he's in high school. So, I imagine there are parents taking their kids back and forth.
Uh, yes, there are. Until a year ago, we didn't even open up the bar on Friday or Saturday nights because those are the nights that the kids would play late. We wouldn't have a 10 o'clock game for a, a child on, on a Tuesday evening, for example. So, we wouldn't even have the bar open. And then, until we did our renovations, it was more bar than restaurant. Now, it's more restaurant than bar. But again, if the kids are playing Friday and Saturday nights, we don't have, it's unusual for us to have adults playing at the same time. We try to keep the crowds a little bit separate.
Okay, great. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Can I do an update first?
Janet?
Yeah, it's Minuteman. It has to do with Minuteman region. I got a, I've been in touch with Vince Amoroso, who's the Board of Selectmen Chairman in Boxborough, and he is also now the Minuteman, the Boxborough Rep on the school committee for Minuteman region, and he is, well, Boxborough probably wants to withdraw from the district, but he's trying to develop a kind of a solution to break the logjam that exists right now. But what he wants to know, and I said I would bring it up, and we can talk about it at the next meeting because we're going to be talking, hearing from Minuteman anyway, Ed Burke, Willen, is what this board's position is on doing the district-wide vote on the school project as opposed to going town meeting by town meeting. There are different tactics involved. I mean, it's just that there's, there's some people prefer one approach over the other. Concord apparently is okay with the district-wide poll, whereas I guess some of the towns, including Sudbury, want to go town meeting by town meeting, and of course, concern is you're not going to have unanimity, you're not going to have the, you're not going to have the vote that you need. The other thing he's proposing is he would like to add to the proposed amendment, which is now stuck because not all of the district, the communities have approved it. He would like to add a provision that lists the towns that want to withdraw, so that then everybody knows who's withdrawing, and then everybody who knows who's staying, and then you have a better sense of what the assessments are going to be for every, but I don't know if that's going to work, and I don't know what the shortcomings are of that. So, anyhow, but we can talk about it later.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, just so something to think about, because we will be discussing Minuteman at the next meeting. So, if you could think about that issue in particular. And thank you to Janet. There's been a lot of new activity in committees, and she's willingly stepped up for us.
And now that I've gotten rid of the committee center issue for now, I can concentrate.
If you haven't been already, the, the Minuteman has been having regular meetings to.
There's one on Friday.
Update people on Friday, and I'm going to go Friday morning.
I'll be there, too.
October 2nd is the next one, so, okay, we'll see you there.
Freddie, you had an update?
I didn't update. I want to remind people, I can't remember if I put it in my report, that the MAGIC, which is our sub-region of our planning area, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAGIC's project for the year is a climate change adaptation strategy, and we're, we have staff support from the MIPC, and we need representatives from Acton. Now, we did find three people who are going to come to the first meeting, but I wanted to say again, as part of this meeting, that the first of the four working group meetings will be October 6th in the morning, 10 to 12, here for the whole region, the 13-town region. There are just going to be about four meetings over the year, and anybody who's interested in this topic of climate change adaptation and resilience should consider coming and should consider being our representative or one of our representatives to this committee.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other updates from people? Wonderful. Now may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Everybody jump. All right. I'll host, Freddie.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you all very much. We'll see you October 5th.